Today is March the 25th and we will call the mayor and council meeting, emergency called meeting to order. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Jim Triplet to come and give us a much needed invocation today.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we got up this morning, the storms passed and we saw the beautiful sunrise. We are reminded, God, that after the storm, you make all things new. Lord, we're in a storm right now, but we know, God, that you're in control and we thank you and praise you for that wonderful truth. God, as we go through this crisis, Father, we lift up our health community, our healthcare provider, Lord, everybody who's working in healthcare, our first responders, our police officers, God, our firemen, God, our utility workers, those that are first line, Lord, continuing to provide services. We ask for your hedge protection around them. We ask you, God, to provide for their every need. Father, we lift up this mayor. The city council were thankful for their leadership, for the county leadership, the health department, God, as they are trying to steer us through these uncertain times. God, once again, we ask for wisdom, guidance, and direction on this body. Lord, we pray for our citizens, our public. God, we pray that you would open people's minds and hearts and help them to see the seriousness of this and adhere, Lord, and take heed to what is decided on this morning. Father, we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Jim. I want to say thank you to our city employees, all of the medical. One of the things that broke my heart the most was yesterday, I got an email from a medical person's spouse and said, "Please, Mayor Kason, help us do something with shelter in place. My husband can't come home and see his children because of him being a medical personnel and he's in his exposure." So, you know, when we stop and we think and we look about, we see sometimes with tunnel vision just what's affecting us and we don't stop and think about what's affecting others. And trust me, I can assure you that this body of elected officials, we have been on the phone, we have been texting, we have covered everything that we could possibly think of to help this community. And there are so many people out there that are trying to help our community. And what we're doing is to try to help people understand the urgency of this. Dr. Larson said yesterday that one person can infect two and a half people every five days, and that's 400 people a month. So, that's why we're doing the shelter in place. And, I mean, you know, you think about 400 a month and then you think about 62,000, that's half the population of Carroll County, and then 1,800 people could die. We don't want that here. We don't want it anywhere. So, we're pleading with you this morning to adhere to what is being said to you. We've got it posted on social media. We've got it posted on websites. We've got it posted everywhere that we possibly can. And I know that there are still people that aren't hearing it. So, yesterday, the Department of Health issued an order and with that, it's shelter in place except for non-essential businesses. And I know there's a lot of questions out there, what's essential and what's not. And what we're doing today, Resolution 09-2020 Corona Shelter in Place, is just to reiterate for our city so that our police department can enforce this, the very same thing that was adopted by the Department of Public Health in our district yesterday. So, the other thing is, I want to ask people, our precious little children don't understand this, and a lot of us don't understand, but please, please do not let your children go and play in the parks. Do not keep them in your yard. Let them go outside and play, but do not let them congregate with other children because, you know, that there's no way children can play and stay six feet apart. So, this is very dangerous. This is how it's going to spread if we don't heed these warnings. Now, the other thing is, we've kept the Green Belt open and we're encouraging people to exercise, but walk on the Green Belt, but walk away from each other. And I know, being a female, we're probably the worst ones to want to walk side by side with somebody so we can talk. But you need to stay six feet apart even when you're walking on the Green Belt. The other thing we want to do is encourage industrial companies that provide snacks or food courts or any of this kind of thing for their employees, do not let your employees sit together and eat. It's great that you provide these things and just ask them to go sit in their car while they eat or, you know, to stay at least six feet apart while they're eating in these cafeterias or snack areas inside of your business, inside of the company, inside the industry, whatever it is. Make sure that they're not sitting together because that's no different than sitting together in a restaurant. The other thing is to remember, it's very important when we adopt this today, that only the essential businesses operate and people stay at home. And having said all that, I'll give you some statistics. For those that don't know, there are 61 as of yesterday or last evening when we participated with the Department of Public Health. 61 people in Carroll County have been diagnosed. And so, these people are spread out all over the county. There's no one hotspot. There's no need to say, well, this person, you know, this cluster came from here because it's spread out all over the county. And there are about 30 people in the hospital right now under the age of 60. So, the misinformation that only elderly and children, that's not true. We had a young lady in Atlanta yesterday to pass away from the virus. So, COVID-19, it doesn't have any respect to persons. It's all over. So, we can't identify that one group is more susceptible than another at this point in time because everybody at this point is susceptible. So, we have Chuck Connerly, our county attorney, I mean, our city attorney, I'm sorry. Y'all have to forgive me. 22 years of sitting county. Sometimes it just comes out that way. We have our city attorney with us this morning and he is going to talk to us about our resolution and basically what this covers.
Thank you, Mayor Kason. A couple of things that I think people ought to know and understand that this resolution and this order, should the mayor and council approve it, is virtually identical to the action that was undertaken by the County Board of Health yesterday. So, the county is already, countywide, is already subject to these very same provisions. The question is, okay, well, why would the city then need to adopt it? And the reason is because the Board of Health obviously has limited resources in terms of being able to enforce the order. So, they have asked us as a city to adopt this, to basically fall in line with the Board of Health so that the city can enforce it, city police department can enforce it. So, it's virtually the same order as was adopted by the Board of Health yesterday. It does incorporate the resolution that the mayor and council adopted on Sunday. So, all of those same prohibitions are still in place. The order is, it's lengthy, but it's pretty simple. For individuals, it requires you to stay at home unless you're involved in an essential activity which is set forth in the ordinance. You can go to your doctor. You can go to the grocery store. You can go to your place of work if your place of work is an essential business. But for individuals, basically it requires you to stay home unless you're engaged in an essential activity. And I would echo what the mayor said is that right now, the Green Belt is open, parks are not open. So, you can get out, you can walk, you can enjoy the Green Belt, but please maintain the social distancing requirements. It allows for essential government functions to continue. It allows for essential businesses to operate, and there's a list of them. There's about, I'm guessing, 26 categories or so of essential businesses. And we're already fielding a lot of questions. We will continue to field a lot of questions about what is and what is not essential. I would encourage you to look, the order itself is, if passed, will be on the city's website. We're also putting together some other materials and I would encourage people to look at the city website. And I think for most cases, it will be pretty self-evident whether you fall in the category of an essential business or not. The other thing that it does is it limits travel except for what is defined as essential travel. And that is what you might expect, travel to and from a doctor's office, travel to and from a place of work if it is an essential business, travel to and from the grocery store, that kind of thing. But the idea behind this is, except for limited activities, except for limited number of businesses, is frankly for people to stay home until this crisis is over. This does not, this order does not have a particular end date. The one that was passed by the Board of Health yesterday ends unless it's extended. I believe, Mayor Kason, it was midnight on April the 12th, if I heard correctly yesterday.
That's correct.
The reason I didn't put an end date is because this body can always get together and say, okay, we're going to rescind this order in Resolution 08-2020 at whatever time we need to. But that's it, unless there are any other questions or comments.
Jim and Bob, do y'all have any questions?
Well, as I've expressed, the travel ban, that seems to be a, that's a big deal. And I didn't realize that it was in there until this morning. So, what is the, I wanted to get on my motorcycle and go for a ride around the block and come back home. That's restricted now.
That's correct. But if you were to get on your motorcycle and drive to the Green Belt and go for a walk or a run, that would be allowed. So, as long as you're traveling to something that is either an essential activity, an essential government function, or an essential business, that's okay. And one thing I forgot to mention, Jim, and I appreciate you bringing it up, even for non-essential businesses, there are still a limited number of things that businesses can do in terms of securing their property, maintaining their inventory, doing payroll and those kinds of things. And that's all set forth in the order. So, if you're a business owner and you're not allowed to open because you're not an essential business, you can still go to your place of business to secure the property, to maintain your inventory, to do payroll and those kinds of functions. You just can't open to the public.
And the other thing is that the governor's already issued the travel ban. So, I mean, that's already statewide. So, we're not doing anything in that respect that hasn't already been done.
But you can, obviously, among the other exceptions, is you can travel to care for, you know, people in your family who are sick, people with disabilities. You can travel to and from educational institutions that are providing meals. I know that our local schools have been providing meals, so that's still allowed. If you find yourself outside of the jurisdiction and you need to return, obviously, you can return home. But as long as you're traveling for an essential activity, that's okay.
Chuck, this is Bob Uglum. If this resolution passes, I'd certainly recommend a frequently asked questions section be added to it. So, you know, maybe it will relieve somebody at City Hall from burden of questions about some of these.
And that has either already happened or is in the works and will be on the website shortly if it's not already.
Another thing, I know it'd be very difficult to enforce, but does anybody else see a reason or purpose in a, some sort of a fine for people that have been tested positive for this virus that don't self-quarantine? In other words, if they don't self-quarantine, there's no punishment whatsoever as far as I know.
There is according.
I don't know. I don't know if this is a big enforcement thing, but if there was such a wording in this resolution, maybe people would take it a little bit more seriously that, you know, I could get a $2,500 fine for not paying attention to this. Maybe I'd better stay home. Would you ever actually be able to enforce it? That may be difficult. But again, we're looking at an issue that a lot of people are just not taking seriously.
It's my understanding, and Chuck was on the call with me yesterday, and I am a member of the local Board of Health. It's a state-issued order now from our local Board of Health, and there is provisions in that to enforce it. And there would be a penalty. And it's my understanding, and Chuck again can help me, that if this is basically what we've adopted and it becomes a resolution, so therefore, anybody that blatantly disobeys this, I mean, you know, we're not going to go out and start arresting people, but we can give citations. So, when this is all over, there can be a penalty for it, for what they'll be brought into court. So, and every day that you don't comply is a new citation. So, that would be a new fine.
And what I would add to that, I believe that the governor's executive order also included a shelter in place for people who had tested positive for the virus. The problem, as I see it from the city's standpoint, is I don't know that we're necessarily in a position to know who has tested positive and who has not. Whereas, I do believe that the Board of Health and the state officials the board of health and the state officials will know and can track that. And I think, right now, they are in the best position to police that. Now, that situation could change, and as we've talked about really since the weekend, this is a very fluid situation, and we may have to revisit some of what we're doing. But I think in terms of quarantines, my recommendation would be that, at least right now, we leave that up to the state and local health officials.
Well, and I'd like to say that, you know, what we're doing here today primarily is just giving us the authority to enforce this, and if we were to have the health department contact us and say, this person has been diagnosed, they've been asked to self-quarantine, they're not, then we would respond in the appropriate manner.
Do I have a motion? I'm sorry.
I couldn't quite hear all of Brett's comments.
Betty, I'd like clarification on, you said Governor Kemp has already implemented a travel ban. I was not aware of that.
Yeah, I don't know about the travel ban, but I think the most recent executive order was that people who are susceptible to the disease are statewide are to shelter in place, and that the people who have already tested positive for the disease are to shelter in place. And I guess that would include not traveling, except, you know, for, you know, getting additional healthcare or whatnot, assuming that that's needed. I think that's what the mayor was referring to.
Yeah, and...
Okay, thanks.
And I...
Thanks for clarification.
I'm sorry, I've read so much, and there's been so much in the last few days, but I'll go back and look, Jim, and if I find that, but I thought he had, you know, basically said, no travel outside the state, this kind of stuff, but I will go back and look and try to find it.
This is much more restrictive than even that. I understand, okay, I'm clear.
Okay.
Personally, I'm not comfortable with the travel as it's related to our change here. So are we ready to make a motion, so, or is there any other discussion? Because I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, we're ready for a motion.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, Resolution 09-2020, with the exception of Section 5 relating to travel, which also would relate to Section H below in relation to essential travel. I'm just not comfortable with either one of those. I'd like to remove both of those for this motion, and we can obviously go back and talk about those two sections, you know, later today or something. I'm just not comfortable with that. So that's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Jim, I think the primary reason for the travel ban would be to keep people from traveling into an area where they could possibly affect another area that has not been affected, or infect people that had not been affected. So if you were going to take a motorcycle ride down to Pine Mountain and stop at a convenience store down there and buy gas, and you, and the clerk that's there, you know, has been infected, or you're infected, you know, it'd be hard to track the infection where if you stay here, if we stay home, then it's much easier to track any, any spread of the virus and attack it from that direction. So I think that's part of the reasoning behind the travel ban, but...
Yeah, I agree with that.
I think for today, I'm willing to go ahead and pass the resolution as written, and then we could continue to discuss, you know, the travel issues. There are so many exceptions for, you know, already in place that are deemed to be essential travel, and, you know, it's not like we're keeping people from being able to go check on their loved ones, or buy groceries, or, we just don't need people scattering out all over the state that could possibly have been infected by someone locally.
Right, and my point is simply, for me personally, that's a bridge too far, that's why I've made the motion to remove it, and we can talk about it later, but it sounds like you're okay with adding it, and we can talk about removing it later. It's just two different positions. So I'm fine, if my motion fails, then we'll move on.
Okay, the motion failed for lack of second. Good morning, this is Mayor Kason.
Yes, I was given your number by the City Hall, and I've got a question. I work for Scott Evans Nissan in Carrollton, and we've got three people here that have possibly have this virus that's going around, and Scott has told them to go and get tested and then come back in until they get the results to work. Well, that puts everybody here on edge, because we don't know whether or not these people have it, and we've also...
I've had a customer that come in that was on quarantine and come in contact with our service advisors, that their family member has it. So we're wondering what we needed to do, and is a dealership on the essential list? I know I'm throwing a lot at you at once, but what we're trying to do is figure out, you know, do we need to be at work? What do we need to do, Scott? Scott is not telling us anything.
Can I take a number from you? And we're trying to get our resolution passed, and then I would say you need, actually, I would think your first call should be to the health department to see what...
I called, yeah, I called them, and they gave me the City Hall number. So I'm being, like, transferred all around.
Well, let me have your number and your name, and I will call you back. Well, it comes up here, so...
Okay. My name is Elaine.
Ms. Kason.
And my number is 770-828-6082.
6082. Okay, well, we will get back in contact with you just shortly, Elaine.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Uh-huh, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Mayor Kason, this is Bob Uglum. Have we announced the number for people to call in?
It's posted for people to call in.
Can you go ahead and read it off?
I think we should really refer people to the website and to the Facebook page.
Bob, are you asking for the number to call in to the meeting?
Well, no, I'm just, you know, yes, if a citizen wants to call in, ask a question.
Okay, well, we posted that outside, so, you know, actually, you know, if somebody wanted to come to the meeting, they could have come outside, and we have a voice box out there, and we have the number posted. So I'm not sure we need to, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but I'm, I think we're going to get calls like this, rather than about the resolution.
Well, normally, what we know here today is that, can I go ahead and second Jim Waters' motion?
Well, I think that motion had failed for lack of a second.
I did find out that there is no statewide travel ban.
Oh, okay, all right, then that's my mistake, and I apologize.
But there, we are ready for another motion.
I'd like to restate my motion to adopt Resolution 09-2020 with the exception of Section 5 regarding travel ban, and also the section at the bottom, or the other section regarding restricted travel. Hold me, give me one second, let me clarify.
Was the ban on travel part of...
Except for Section 5, including regarding travel, and in Section H below, it further defines essential travel. Again, I'm repeating myself, I'm personally just not comfortable with the travel ban aspect of this resolution. I'm glad to discuss it after we get off this call, or whenever, but I'd like to pull it out for discussion later. That's my motion.
Okay, Jim, we can have that...
And I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, now we'll have discussion. Jim, even if we take it out of ours, the Department of Public Health has it in theirs, so theirs will supersede ours over the county.
How about enforcement? Can they enforce it without our approval?
I mean, they do have countywide, they do have countywide enforcement jurisdiction, is my understanding. Now, from, as a practical standpoint, do they have the manpower to enforce it? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, there's a reason why we're voting on this. I assume there's an enforcement component to it, otherwise, we wouldn't even be having this discussion, so I don't know how they would enforce it without our enforcement department, police department helping with that. Again, I just want further clarification on this. I'm not prepared to vote yes on Section 5 today, so that's my motion.
So the motion would be to approve Resolution 09-2020, but omit from it Paragraph 5 and Paragraph H. I guess actually that would be technically 6H, so we would omit Paragraph 5 and 6H.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Okay, then Resolution 09-2020 Corona Shelter in Place has passed with the exception of the two sections, 5 and 6H. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
We'll move.
Okay, have a move in a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance, and thank you to the IT people for setting this up for us.
Thank you. Thank you.